This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's six o'clock on November ninth, 2023. This will bring the meeting for the Rome City Council to order. We do have a quorum. Mr. Johnson apparently is not here. So let's start out with our pastor. Pastor Van Zet, please.
All right, three bow heads and close your eyes. Dear the Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for having you bless us with. Thank you for just allowing us to be safe during the weather. Lord, I pray that you'll please us continue to watch over our city. And I pray that you'll please us be with the first responders. I pray that you'll please us be with Chief Esses and Chief Devis. And I pray that you'll please us give them wisdom as they continue to manage our city and give us the protection that we need. Lord, I pray that you'll please us be with our city administrator and our mayor. And I pray that you'll please us be with our elected officials as well. And I pray that you'll please us allow them to make the best decisions for the city. Father, I pray that you'll please us allow us to be law-abiding citizens and allow us to be just grateful for what is coming to the city of Rome. And I pray that you'll please us allow us to make the best decisions for the city of Rome as we grow. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Okay. Mrs. King, could I impose upon you? This is the revised statement that was your recommendation. If you could read about the public comments, please.
Absolutely. The council is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, they may make a statement of fact regarding the item or policy. They may also ask that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. Public comments require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, are limited to three minutes, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult or slander any individual shall be cause for removal from council chambers.
Okay, we got public comments?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Josh McCabe.
Good evening, council. Josh McCabe, Crown Point, City of Rome. As I watched your discussion on this topic in your last meeting, it seemed several of you had concerns about the validity of the tax petition that was presented, mainly around was the information provided to the signers accurate and all encompassing of future ramifications of rolling it back. If we look at previous petitions presented to this council, by now you should know that that information also was false and inaccurate. With that being said, I'd say it's a safe bet that this petition was not accurately portrayed as it was completed by the same group of people. But I digress. I'm here using the citizen presentation opportunity to help do something good and lend my experience and expertise to you all. We know that if this tax rate is voted down, that will be put our town in serious jeopardy if not have a water source in the next few years. Obviously, this is not good for many reasons. If we don't handle it ourselves now, then the government will step in and make us take action and foot an even larger bill. Believe me, it's happened to us. So how do we ensure that our citizens have all the proper information to make an informed decision on this tax rate vote? And maybe if on? How do we guarantee that the proper information is put out in face-to-face efforts? And the ramifications of what we could face is if this doesn't work? To me, it doesn't make sense that the elected council members can't champion such a thing as this. You sit here and discuss it openly. You vote on it in a public setting. You, better than others, know the truth and the false of this topic. So if we clearly know your thoughts on it, why can't you go out and champion such a cause? What you can do, though, is this council has the authority to create a committee of independent citizens who can go out and champion the cause. Working with staff, you can select a group to train and provide all the information and let them get the word out. That way, you can rely on these individuals that the truth is put out and what the consequences would be if this were to fail. Now, this is something that you would need to take action on soon as the voting will be here before we know it. You may not be able to get the right citizens by simply posting this call to action on social media. You may have to go headhunt residents that will do this. Give them the proper information and let them go door to door. Let them host meetings to provide the information. Maybe others would be willing to listen to their neighbors rather than the elected officials. But this will take time to orchestrate, so you would need to move quickly. It's going to take a team effort to make this happen. Residents need to know the dangers of what voting this down might mean. While it's saving a couple of bucks now, it could potentially cost each of us even more further down the road. Let's get to work on this so that we can't say we didn't give it everything to make sure our neighbors have the right information to make a truly informed decision. Good luck, council.
Anything else?
Our next speaker is Josh Barnes.
Good evening, council. I know a couple of you personally. I just wanted to come and talk about a project that we're looking at possibly doing for the city. Over off of Hickory, we've got the Hickory property under contract right now. We're looking at, it's in the ETJ. So we've been in discussion, trying to see what it would take to bring that into the city when that's just wanted to put a face and name for those that don't know us. We're right here on Main Street Structured Building Group Structured Custom Homes. Randall's actually about one of our homes before. We like to keep a good quality product coming into the city. We like to be a part of the growth and a part of the development. So we're just basically just wanted to reintroduce ourselves. It's been a little bit since we have done some buildings. So just wanted to come down here tonight and introduce us. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Give your mother my fondest regards. What else you got?
That's the end of public comment?
City Hall is closed November 10th in recognition of Veterans Day. That's tomorrow. City Hall will be closed November 23rd and 24th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And the next city council meeting will be December 7th, 2023. Apparently, there's a Veterans Day celebration going on the 11th over in Bridgeport, which will also have our Rome veterans there with their car show.
Mayor, if I could, we have the wrong date. The next meeting's actually the 14th of December.
Oh, you know, I knew that.
Also, if you could give me just a moment. I had put on our Facebook page, and well, it will come out on Facebook soon, but on our city's website, the trash schedule for Thanksgiving has changed. So if any of you filled any comments or questions on that, the original Tuesday date of trash pickup that week is the same. However, the Friday date will move to Saturday. So I thought this might be one more opportunity that we could let people know that that change has occurred. So it is on the front page of our website. It is also going to post twice on social media during that week as an additional reminder.
Anything else? Have any announcements from council? All right. I know these are on the consent agenda. But if we can just, if council has no objection, if we can pull those up consent agenda and just get a brief rundown on each one. We have no objection. Could you give us a brief rundown on both of those?
Mayor, these are the same two items that we discussed at the last meeting that we had. This sets a council meeting calendar for 2024. One of the things that we discussed at the meeting earlier in about two weeks ago, I guess now, was that we added a strategic planning, goals, and governance retreat on January the 19th. We added new council orientation on May the 17th and a budget planning workshop on June the 7th, so that those are predetermined and on the council's calendar, both if folks want to make plans to travel around those dates or sometime near those dates, that they could be here in order to be part of the discussions. The general idea for the January meeting is to set the goal and the trajectory of the city for the next 12 months. Currently, we do not have that type of goal setting that's been done in a recent timeframe, and we do not have a strategic plan. So that is something that I'd like to see us put together as 2024 continues on. As well as staff and I have taken some time at our previous staff meeting to rough out some brainstormed ideas about goals and objectives for the city from the staff standpoint. We'd like to bring those forward to council so that you all can help us prioritize those and/or add or subtract from them based on council's direction. So that retreat will be very important. The 17th is similar to the one that we had earlier this year where anyone who is new to council or anyone who's been on council and like a refresher on what governance means and what their role is as a city council member, what staff's role is, the city attorney, et cetera, open meetings information. We can certainly cover all of that. And then, of course, the budget planning workshop is fairly self-explanatory.
Do we need a separate motion for each of us now?
Yeah. What do you think?
It's not required by law. If you can articulate it in one motion, that will be fine.
Okay, go.
I make a motion to approve the 2024 council meeting calendar and the code amendment to reflect state statute for council meeting dates.
I'll say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, monthly staff reports and board minutes. And unless we've got any other questions on number one, we'll move to number two swearing of new full-time officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm Chief Eric Devis. It's my pleasure to represent the citizens of Rome as their chief of the police department. And it's nights like this that I love to see all the team together when we bring on a new member. When we bring a new member on, it doesn't happen very often. We're fortunate in the fact that we have officers that have come together as much as a family as they are as a team. And so we don't lose many very often. And when we do, we're very fortunate that God looks over us. And we don't, we rarely just put out an ad and wait for applications. The officers here tend to recruit the people they want to work with. And that's exactly what happened this time. Y'all remember we swore in Officer Hatchell a couple of years ago now. And when he realized we were going to have an opening, he reached out to a gentleman that he wanted to work with. And when we look for an officer for our department, we base our ideals on the ideal team player by a book by Patrick Lencioni. And the ideal team player is made up of three characteristics, which are humble, hungry, and smart. And so with that said, I'd like to bring up Mr. or Officer Armando Yanez and bring him up front by the mayor while I say a few words about him. Come on, Armando. Don't be shy. So when Jimmy said, hey, we have a gentleman that would like to work here with us, because it is working with us, I said, okay, we'll bring him in. Let's interview him and let's let him ride out with the other guys and see how he fits, see how he does with the interaction with our team and see if he meets those ideal team player. And I could, and I can tell you, this gentleman right here, sitting in my office, just exuded humility. That's what I got from him. We probably had a two-hour conversation when I first met him. And it was during his background that Sergeant Grant did that the second part of the ideal team player came into focus, and that was hungry. Everybody he worked with in the past said he's one of the more driven officers they've had the pleasure of working with. He's been the recipient of, if I'm not mistaken, Rookie of the Year and also a life-saving award. And the sergeants that he worked for said that he normally led the shift in their statistics. So that's two parts. The third one is smart. And smart, not intelligence per se, but I will tell you from his written communications with me, he's also a very smart person. But smart in the Lencioni ideal team player characteristic is how you speak to people and how you relate to people and how you can interact with those around us. It's almost an emotional intelligence as opposed to an intelligence quotient. So I'm excited to bring Armando Yanez into the team tonight. We're going to swear him in. He's brought some people that I want him to introduce to you.
Thank you. I'm going to start, introduce my wife, Tabitha. Yeah. My wife, Tabitha. It's my oldest, Liliana. She plays softball. And my youngest, Olivia, we also play softball. So thank you for allowing me the privilege to serve the community of Rome. I'm excited to be here.
In Rome, when we swear somebody in, we always have the team stand behind them. So that's what I'm going to have, is I'm going to have the team of officers from Rome come stand behind and don't be going to sit. I'm going to have them stand behind Officer Yanez, walk this way so we can have enough room, and we'll do the swearing in.
Aye, Armando Yanez. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of police officer for the city of Rome, state of Texas. I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the constitutional laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Thank you.
I think he's going to have Tabitha come up and pin him.
All right. Let's move on to public hearing. City council to conduct a public hearing to consider a replat, one tract being legally described as tract acres 4.41, abstract A0743, block 26, 27, 28, PT 29, A743 Smith CSL 6.928 acres, block 26, 27, 28, PT 29, and A743 Smith CSL 1.072 acres, block 26, 27, 28, PT 29. And it is 6:19. We'll convene into public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Caravano is here to speak to this item.
Hi, my name's Peter Caravano. I'm with Bearhampton and Brown. We're the engineers of record for the project. We're representing Castle Development Group. We're building construction, the urgent care. This replat would be for an approximately one acre site or just the urgent care. And it's intended to be the first phase of development for the project. The utilities will be provided by the ranch shore to the south and the water line that they should soon be constructing. Site will ultimately house a 7,500 square foot urgent care facility. And then I can answer any questions.
This item was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission for the replat on Monday evening, and it passed unanimously.
This is somewhat administrative, right?
We have any comments or anything from the public? Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Nice. Hi, Mrs. B. C. Very good. Any other, any other comments? Okay. And we're going to close public hearing. Mr. Peter. 6:21. Okay, I think you're going to need a motion.
We still have the regular agenda item, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we've got another one on another tract over here. Can we go ahead and just skip to it? Yeah, let's just, yeah, let's just go ahead and skip to that. Mr. Edkin says it's okay. Get a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve the replat.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Do I need to put?
Replat acres 4.41 abstract. I just read it, and it's the same thing as what was up above. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go to the number two public hearing. City council to conduct a public hearing to consider replat, one tract being legally described as tract acres 2.23 lot AR, I'm sorry, 4R-1 and acres 2.27 lot 4R-2, block two of Metro Tech's business park phase two.
Mayor, this item was also heard by Planning and Zoning on Monday evening and passed unanimously. I don't know if we have anyone from Metro Tech's here. We did at the P&amp;Z meeting, and questions were answered relative to this. It's in our ETJ, and they are, I believe, taking two plats and making it into one.
Okay, where is this located? If you can give me kind of just a vicinity.
I'm not familiar with that area of 114, but it's out along 114. The map is in the packet.
If I can just get a description, we can pick up on it. Anybody on the council have an idea where this is? You do?
I think it's right out there where
Okay.
Actually, this says it's along 287.
Okay, it's along 287. Okay. Oh, that's where we got all the stuff, the traffic access.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the replat of acres 2.23.
Hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
6:24, close the public hearing. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the replat of lots 4R1 and lots 4R2 of Metro Tech's business park phase two.
Okay, second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, number three, planning and zoning appointment. City administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. As you will recall, in one of our recent meetings, we had the pleasure to appoint a new member to our Planning and Zoning Commission. We have also received an additional application. So we have one individual this evening that is here and happy to answer any questions that you all may have. The application was in your packets. Mr. Hernandez has put his name forward as the next member of P&amp;Z. We actually have someone on P&amp;Z now that would like to roll off. So we will still have one more vacancy for a regular seat if council appoints Mr. Hernandez this evening.
Who's going off for P&amp;Z? Christie? Nara? Cox?
Yes.
Come on up, Mr. Hernandez. In case they've got some questions. Aren't you and Mrs. Ty, our council member, married? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hernandez? None of them know? Want to tell us anything?
Been here a firefighter seven years, been attending the meetings quite frequently. Just looking for an opportunity to volunteer.
I can see from your application that it's clear that you have led a life of service with being an officer, a certified firefighter, an arson investigator, and fire inspector. So I think you bring some good, smart, actual intellectual quotient to the team. Not that they don't already have some, but I think it'd be good for our Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, motion?
I say motion approve over P&amp;Z. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And number four is Spartan Energy.
We actually have a representative here that has a presentation for council as it relates to this item on the agenda. We do have the ability to negotiate electricity prices, and our contract is running out. And so he is here to have that discussion with you all this evening.
How you guys doing? My name is Wesley. So I'm actually the branch manager of Dallas for Spartan Energy. I just want to start off by saying sorry about being late. I planned about two hours of drag time. It took me two hours and 15 minutes, which was crazy with all the weather. So I actually currently still live in Waco. I just got married last, yes, I just got married last week. So we're getting a bunch of stuff happening. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But yes, so I've been working very closely with Shayna, trying to help you guys out. So just super quick, we're going to go over just kind of who we are as a company because you're currently with TXU. You do have three contracts in front of you. There, I like to give you guys a couple of different options. I'll tell you which one I would say is the best option for the city and then kind of move on from there. Okay, so you can go ahead and scroll down. So yeah, we are Spartan Energy. Basically, why we're here is kind of she, Miss Amanda, hit it right on the, right on the head. You have the ability to choose who you use for power in the state of Texas. So we are actually a full-service brokerage firm. So we protect your electricity costs by locked-in and competitive rates. So there's two types of deals that work with electricity. You can have your flex rates, and you can have your locked-in contracts. Flex rates are the worst possible for any business, any city, any house. So we got a kind of a, we get to tailor the blueprint for the city. So we have a bunch of different features that we could add. We could add, delete, we could blend and extend. So we have your early renewal. So that's kind of what we're doing here today. So you guys do expire in about a year. We, yeah, October in about a year. So we do like to normally do two to three years out. So we are in the process of kind of backtracking with the city, but that's okay. So we do have a personalized account manager. That would be myself. So I would have a direct contact with Shayna. You guys have any issues, you need to add, subtract, whatever with your contract, you call me directly instead of sitting on hold. We also have absolutely no hidden fees, and that's something I want to go over on your current contract. You have a couple, something we call junk charges and hidden fees that if something happens in the city, it could cost the city a lot of money. And then long-term solution. I got a 108-month contract, and also I could go all the way down. But that's my, that's my favorite one. So we'll go ahead and go to the next one. So since 2020, I'm sure we all know this, but the energy market has increased by 23%. So by able to lock you in for five, 10 years, you don't have to fight that ever-changing increase in market. All right, so it's kind of funny. I created this contract on Wednesday, or sorry, this presentation on Wednesday for you guys. Your current rate is sitting at a 4.2 with those junk charges. So do you, you should have each gotten one of your old, your old TXU bills. Are you guys able to see those?
Should be one at each table.
It's not going to be the NRG contract. It's going to be the one that says TXU or City of Rome at the top. It's going to be on the, as soon as you start to see TXU, you could scroll, go to, it's like It's going to be on the, as soon as you start to see TXU, you could scroll, go to, it's like, let's go to like page seven, I think is the one I was looking at. And I'm going to pull it up on my phone so I could just read it for you guys as well, okay? Okay, yeah, so on page seven of your TXU bill, you have something called a base, other charges. Okay, so TXU could put whatever in that section. So someone hits a telephone pole, someone hits anything in the city that affects that specific meter, that other charge on page seven could go from fourteen to five hundred dollars. It could fluctuate dramatically. So that's what we call an unprotected rate. So you show you have a four point one cent rate for your kilowatts right now, still a great rate. I don't want to take you out of the current contract because it's such a good rate. The problem is, is you're unprotected in those junk charges. Okay, another one is going to be your other ERCOT charges and along with gross receipts reimbursements. So I kind of like to tell a little horror story here. We had a client, there's really large client, somewhat comparable to the city. They were with a different provider, same situation during the freeze. They got a bill for three hundred thousand dollars. So unfortunately, we, they weren't a client of ours yet. They reached out to us and said, hey, what can we do about this? So we were able to work it, get them out of that contract and have them pay a cancellation fee of only three grand. So three thou, three hundred or three grand. So that's, that's the problem with an unprotected rate. But again, you have such a good rate right now, so we don't want to mess with it. But so when I did this contract, or when I did this presentation for you guys on Wednesday, we got back in eight-five for the longest possible contract. When I reran it this morning, you're going to see, it's going to, it should be the one ending in September two thousand thirty-three. We got it locked in at an eight point two. Okay, so I even got it a little lower than I did from the beginning. We do have a couple of other options, but I want to open it really quick right now. Do you have any questions from what I said so far?
So council has three different contracts at their table? So you'll want to find the one that ends in twenty thirty-three?
I believe it is going to be the one with the colored NRG logo, if you guys have colored on yours.
So our rates are doubling?
Unfortunately, yes.
And without, without this person, the broker, what was the rate that you found?
Yeah, we're sitting, City of Rome averages around anywhere between eleven cents and fourteen cents. That's a really good question because it's like, why do you need me? No, I, I love that question too, because it gives me the ability to answer that. Because the cool thing about us is there is brokerage agencies that are actually solely, solely commissioned. We are a, we are a full salary based one. So it's my job to get you guys cheap as possible, no matter what, because I still get paid at the end of the day and I help you guys out. So I did get you approved for that nine-year contract. We do have a couple others. You have a question?
Yes, so Amanda, what, with TXU, what kind of fluctuation have we seen in our bills?
Like Shayna's handled a considerable amount of this. Our average bill for all the silly, city facilities is about fifty-six hundred dollars a month. So it, it can get up there fairly quickly, but with those hidden charges in there, I'm not sure how TXU would price this out. Shayna, do you recall where they were?
It's going to be in your contract.
So I understand the average is about fifty-six hundred, but the concern that you bring forth is we could have some surprise event. And have we had where we got a ten thousand dollar electric bill or not that I've seen?
It's rare. I will say that it is rare. That's why, how I structured the contract for you guys is not to take you out of the force. Because if, again, I want to reiterate, it is still okay, but there is that possibility with those fees to have you guys shoot up so high.
So I don't know if this ever happens, but does the price of electricity go down?
Go down? So perfect. I'm glad you brought that up. That is going to be something I'm going to talk about later, but you are in a large commercial contract. Large commercial contract with Spartan Energy gives me the ability that at any time during this contract, I can go into your situation. If I see the market drop, I rerun the quote. Because I have a direct contact with Shayna, we could call a quick city council meeting and I could lower you back down to whatever I find. And that could change starting October twenty twenty-four. If November somehow it drops to three cents, you're going to get a call from, I'm going to call Shayna and say, hey, it dropped. Let, let's get this on the city council meeting.
And is this still going to be NRG or would you possibly find someone else that was cheaper? Was this for nine years, we're locked in?
Yes, so NRG is the largest, one of the largest providers here in the state of Texas. We have a direct relationship with them because we're their number one broker here in the state and I think number seven as of last year in the nation. So we trust NRG fully with your guys' and also a couple of the other cities that I currently do. But no, I have the ability to go to pretty much anyone, especially with the size of your contract. You guys are sitting around at the long length of about five million. You will use five million in nine years.
And if you'll look towards the back of what he's provided, you have a listing under exhibit A of all of the areas that we have electrical service to. So you'll have an idea of how many different connections that the city has.
You make my job so easy. I love it. Yes, so just like that right there, that's a good part to pay attention to for add and delete. Say we, you know, I know you guys give your, I know you guys are building some new urgent cares or something. If they wanted to reach out to us and one added to the city, doesn't have to, but if they wanted to, we could, or we could do it for them as well. So it kind of opens us up to help business owners in the city as well. But if you need to take something off the contract or you need to add a city business, a building, you call me and I'll add it.
So do we pay y'all out our yearly or how's this?
It's going to be the exact same. So monthly bills coming from NRG going straight to Shayna.
But how do you get paid?
I get paid is I get paid on the contract as soon as it's signed. So you don't have to worry about me. That's how I work for free. Work for free is that if I was a small broker, I would have to wait till the end of this contract to make our commission as a company. Because I'm bringing it directly to NRG and we earned that number one status, we get paid at the beginning, so I get paid my salary. Does that answer the question on pay or is it more question on how you pay your?
I think it's more because I go with the broker to try and find my electricity and I pay them ten dollars a month to.
Use energy over.
Yes.
Yep, yep. So no, we don't do that because I'm a salary employee. I get paid based off contracts.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? I'll just move on to kind of more of the numbers so you could see what's actually going to happen.
To make sure.
Yes, sir.
The city's contract with you, do we have a separate contractual relationship with you? These documents, of course, are with third, other third parties, so they're not with you. So who's?
Yes, so your contract is going to be directly with NRG and because, and I've said this like three times, but we are their number one broker. We have that, earn that status to where I get to put you directly with NRG. I don't have to put you with Spartan Energy, who then goes and puts you with NRG. I have, I've earned their authorized retailer.
If we don't like what you're doing, how do we get rid of you?
Well, why would you get rid of me?
Because we don't like what you're doing.
It's okay.
Is there a relationship, a legal relationship with your energy?
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir.
It wasn't presented in any of these, though, right?
It's because of NRG, so we are directly related to NRG, which therefore we have that relationship built.
Is that documented?
It should be in there. I have, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. I have never received that question. And I'm very sorry.
So is NRG the only electric company that you work with then? I mean, is that?
So NRG owns about five different companies, which is Reliant, CRO, Green Mountain, Stream. So we want to put you with the big guys. I don't want to put you with Reliant. I don't want to put you with Stream, but I have the ability to put you with another broker, or sorry, not a broker, another provider, Summer Energy, SFE Energy. There's a few different people I could put you with. I would rather put you guys with the city under NRG because we have a better rate with them as well.
Carbon, I think page four of each of these, number thirteen at the top, addresses notice to customers with brokers.
I just got these about the same time you did, so I'm.
Oh, that was impressive. I was. It's going to be pretty similar to a, a contract with, that you have right now with TXU. The only benefit is that I'm here to where if something changes in the market, I can lower you. If you were just directly with a provider like NRG or what is called an REP, you don't have that ability during the duration of your contract.
I'm assuming that would be similar to what we have now with TXU, since we're directly with them. There is no ability to lower the rate. You're just quoted that and then you go from there for the duration of the time.
Yes, ma'am, and they will not renew you early because the REPs are paid directly, so they need to wait till about thirty to sixty days out to get you powered. Because they have to buy it first. And if I buy it a year early and I spend, and the provider spends that money and you're not paying them for another year, it's, they can't do business.
This is a nine-year contract. Is that hard and fast or, you know, if there's something that we don't, that's not agreeable, are we able to terminate that without a penalty or?
There will be a penalty, but my big thing is, is because I got you such a large contract, the reason I went so far is because of the abilities I have within the contract. The only reason that I think we would need to terminate is if you got a lower rate, right? If that happens, you're going to get a call from me first to lower you guys.
And keep in mind, council, you have two other termination dates of twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-one, if you want to look at any of those options as well.
And I'm curious, why is the rate for the contract ending in twenty twenty-eight lower than the one ending in twenty thirty-three?
Yep, so it's slightly lower because where, when you purchase power, you buy it in lump sums. So in this forty-eight month contract, I'm not buying as much power as I'm buying in your long-term contract. But for example, this eight cent rate that I have until twenty twenty-eight, if we do twenty-two percent increase in the next two years, I'm going to have to renew you guys two and a half times during this contract, which is going to be above an eight point two. And does that make sense? You have questions on that?
So let me run by what I heard.
Yes.
So if we enter into an agreement and it's through twenty twenty-eight and we're current, excuse me, through twenty twenty thirty-three and we're at that point zero eight five cents.
Eight-two, yes.
Okay, then if the rate goes up, you're going to renew us at a higher rate?
Not during your contract. So that's why I want to get you the longest.
So the longer you lock in, the longer the term is steady, the longer the rate is steady.
Yes.
It could go down, but it's not going to go up.
Yes, think of this contract as a cap. The City of Rome for the next nine years will not pay more than eight point two for electricity.
So that would be the risk if we go with a shorter term contract and electricity costs go up exponentially and when we renew, it would likely not be at the eight cents.
I, I think I personally would like to give Carbon, the rest of us, a little more time to review the contracts before we take action on this item.
We can certainly do that. Just know that when, I'm assuming when Wesley pulls the bills the next time, that the rate might be slightly different. But we can return this to the agenda on the fourteenth of December, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, that, that makes, I mean, it sounds like it's a good idea. I mean, if we, we get a lower rate, then you can lower the rate, but it's not going to raise the rate anymore.
Yeah, so I have absolutely no problem waiting. For the City of Moody, when I ran theirs, we ran it three months before and unfortunately it did increase by the time we made a decision. And I don't want to pressure you guys. I think you have to make it tonight, but I'm here because I want to answer the questions and get it handled tonight if possible.
I'm not sure it's the questions as much as giving our attorney a chance to look at the contract before council authorizes anyone to sign that. So we'll reset it to the fourteenth, we'll run the rates again and bring it back and then we'll hopefully have a decision at that point.
Yeah. So I can't give you an exact number tonight because if in, if in six months we decide to cancel this contract, you won't be on flow with me. So it would be the full five million kilowatts that we'll have to run and a, a calculation during, during, so it's a calculation of kilowatts left and remaining months. So I cannot give you an exact number today. Now, it would be owed to NRG, not myself. It has, I'm only here to more so help in getting this lower rate rather than going straight to a different provider and getting it. In terms of cancellation, say you cancel three years down the road, I would then have to calculate the remaining kilowatts and remaining months to then give you your.
And I'm assuming that's because they've pre-purchased.
Yes, it is. Yeah. A hundred percent, I could do that for sure. Really quick, I've been up here a lot. If we could go to the next couple of slides, I just want to show something. So we will have an increase of two thousand four hundred dollars to the city's bill. I want that to be known as well with that eight point five. So it's going to be slightly lower and that's per month. Now, in the next slide, this is if we shoot up to still a ten cent rate, you're going to pay close to a hundred grand more. That's just, I'm trying to show the difference between even one and a half cents. So when we're talking about point two cents, it's still, it does make a difference, but the long run, instead of me having to increase you guys in the next two years, we have that savings for the long duration.
To answer Carbon's question, I think number twelve talks about partial termination. Page three at the bottom to page, to the top of page four.
Yep, so that's not full termination. That's why I answered the question in that way. Because partial termination is when you guys remove less than twenty-five percent, which is no fee.
Exactly, but you're saying partial means you can delete one or some of your accounts, but, but not all.
Twenty-five percent or less.
Twenty-five percent or less.
Are there any additional services that your organization provides as value added? For instance, we've got a list of locations here. I'm looking at streetlights, seven thirty-three. Do you do any analysis to allow us to save on usage?
So there's a lot of, so, there's a lot to go into that question, but I'll try and touch on it. So if you look at your TXU bills, you'll see a section called your distribution charges. With that being said, cycle, city lights, streetlights, stuff like that, we would suggest, which is going to be hard for the city, is you turn them on in fifteen-minute intervals. Because if you, the electricity grid is constantly going like this and it's red every fifteen minutes on your distribution. So if you have the ability, I don't a hundred percent know how streetlights work. If you do have the ability to set a certain time and if you could do every sixteen minutes on your streetlights to turn on, you would lower that by almost thirty percent on your distribution charges.
And I would like to expand there. I wasn't just referring to streetlights, I was referring to other things also. So apparently you will assist us in analysis of efficiencies.
We can, yes. It is going to be more than I could go into right now, but yes, I could.
And you said other cities also use this?
Yes, ma'am, so we currently broker for the City of Moody. I took care of them about four, six months ago. It's near Waco, yep, exactly. And then I'm also working right now with the City of Decatur. We are in the process of finding their camp, their termination, sorry, not termination, their end date. We also are working with the City of Waco as well. They come up for an early renewal in two thousand twenty-six. So you have a bunch more cities as well.
Y'all are fairly new at the government contracts?
We haven't attempted government contracts kind of before I, I got here, just because it's, it's a newer thing for NRG, not for us as a company. We, we've done, I mean, I've done deals where we're sitting close to twenty thirty million, which is good. The cool thing about cities, though, is that I have all these perks to add and delete for you guys. But yes, we are fairly new in the city. City council meetings, getting in front of business owners, stuff like that.
So we'll bring this back on the fourteenth for council to review again.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Okay, number five, proclamation designating November sixth to the tenth, two thousand twenty-three Municipal Court Week. And that's also the city administrator. And when you get to it, if you'll go ahead and read your proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Although Christie Adams couldn't be with us this evening, I can tell you that our municipal court is a very important part of the service delivery that we provide for the community. So it is only right and prudent that we recognize all of her efforts tonight. So in recognition of Municipal Court Week and where. and whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas communities through the adjudication of traffic offenses, ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas the procedures for the Rome Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. And whereas the municipal courts serve as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine-only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our city. And whereas the City of Rome is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us. And whereas the municipal court judge and clerks should comply with the law and pledge to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all and to continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars and annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas the municipal court judge is not a policymaker for the City of Rome, but is bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and is required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials and employees. And whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the municipal court in complying with such legal requirements. Therefore, I, Patricia Mitchell, Mayor of Rome, Texas, do hereby proclaim that the week of November sixth through the tenth of twenty twenty-three is recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the municipal court of the City of Rome. Witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Rome to be affixed to this document on the ninth day of December, excuse me, of November twenty twenty-three.
Number six, uh, vote for appraisal board.
Thank you, Mayor. This is back in front of you. You have in the packet as well as I have in front of me the ballot. If counsel would like to cast their vote for one of the eight members that are running for the Wise County Appraisal District Board, we do have, I believe, thirty-three votes according to the document that the appraisal board sent to us. Counsel can either allocate all thirty-three votes for one person or they can allocate them across these eight based on however many votes they'd like to cast for an individual person. You will notice in your agenda commentary that I put together for this item that there are current board members that are running and there are others that are on the ballot. So if you have that in front of you, Ray Cook Jr. is currently on the board. Mr. Lewis is on that board and Karen Schluter is on that board. The other names listed are new individuals that have been brought forward. And Mr. Clayton Brazelton, I'll bring that to your attention, is the member that the, he is a part of the M D D for the City of Boyd. And they have, um, they will be casting their votes for him. And they have asked if counsel would consider voting for that individual as well. So I need direction from counsel as to which way you would like to cast your votes.
I know Ruddick is also on the current board member list.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Wasn't listed. Do we have to do all thirty-three votes? We have to have, or, or can you do eighteen votes for one and twelve for another?
You can split them out however you choose.
Is Clayton Brazelton the only one from Boyd? The only one down here in this section?
The Clayton, Mr. Brazelton's the only one that I've received any information on. Uh, that's why I wanted to point out who had been on the board so you knew who were incumbents coming back for election. You did have in your current packet the resume of Mr. Brazelton so that you all could review that if necessary.
Now Dennis Penny has been, uh, he's a, he was a firefighter, but I think he's disabled now. Not sure. But he was very instrumental in getting that, uh, E S D district two implemented. I'll just know he was, I'm not going to say he was necessarily instrumental, but he was, you know, he was very informed, informative. As I say, he's a former firefighter as far as I know. Is Karen Schluter any relation to Mark Schluter?
I don't know any of these individuals personally, so I couldn't comment.
I would say just send all our votes to the Boyd nominee.
Can I not get somebody to agree to maybe split them?
Yeah, I really don't know anyone on the list, uh, personally. And I think it's very important that we have representation from South Wise County. Seems like we get left out of things fairly often.
I'm comfortable moving that we devote all thirty-three of our votes to Clayton Brazelton.
I'll second that.
Karen, done deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And petition to, uh, roll back tax rate.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is also being brought back. We had some typographical errors in the previous resolution that was presented to you. It doesn't invalidate the petition. It will still move forward. And we have added in the corrected resolution that the next uniform election date will be May of twenty twenty-four.
You need a second vote on that?
I would need that because we've amended the resolution from the last time.
Okay, it will be, the next uniform date is May of twenty twenty-four.
Correct. Shayna has a corrected resolution for you to sign this evening. I believe the one in the packet said November. That was the original information that we received from the Elections Office in Wise County. However, we've verified this information with our city attorney's office and with some other folks that we know that are, have conducted these type of elections, so it will be in May.
I make a motion to approve the corrected resolution, number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
I'll say again.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll go to executive session. Section five-five-one, point zero seven-one, consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offer or to seek advice from attorney, three hundred West B C Rome. Section, we'll have to read five-five-one because we're not doing that. Five-five-one, point zero seven-four, personnel, discuss appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer, employee or hear complaint or charge against officer, employee in executive session unless officer or employee requests a public hearing. That'd be city administrator. Section five-five-one, point zero eight-seven, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city has received from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate, stay or expand in or near the city and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. Hickory Street Development Project and Prairie Point Development. And it is six fifty-eight. We will, uh, go into executive session at this time.
If I could remind counsel to turn off your microphones, please.
This conference will now be recorded.
Not yet, not. It's eight forty-three. We'll reconvene, um, from executive session. And, um, we've got three items on here that will continue in negotiations. But, um, the one item regarding the city administrator, counsel's going to make a motion for the approval of a raise. Eleven and a half percent, bringing her current salary from one hundred and thirty thousand to one hundred and forty-five thousand. And in addition to making a change to the Texas municipal retirement system to allow her to buy back the time that she accrued with other cities. All right, need a motion. Okay. All right. First motion then, uh, for the raise, eleven and a half percent.
All right, we've had this discussion in the back and based on Mr. Gann's experience, her communication, her transparency, everything that she has tried to do for this city and has done for this city. Um, we are giving her eleven and a half percent raise or I'd like to make a motion to give her an eleven and a half percent raise to one forty-five, one hundred and forty-five thousand a year.
When is this effective?
Effective the next full pay period.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the second item is to allow her the opportunity that'll require an ordinance that Carvin will bring back to us, uh, to allow Mrs. DeGan to purchase back her, uh, time from T M R S.
Make a motion to, um, what, what is that? Approve the ordinance for the buyback of the T M R S?
I thought it was just direction to create a resolution for next time.
So we're just giving direction? We're not even making a motion then?
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yes, please. Direct, I'm directing staff to prepare an ordinance.
Okay. And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, next thing is the anything for future agenda items?
I would like to make sure we entertain Josh's suggestion of creating a committee regarding future bond issues in elections.
All right. And, um, okay.
I, I would also like to bring something, maybe in January, about the liquor laws within the city. Have a discussion about that.
The what laws?
Liquor laws.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else? Okay, um, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll say again.
Eight forty-seven. We'll adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay.